What she's handed you are two public documents that are posted online. One is the February twenty twenty four strategic growth plan as it was revised in February. And the other one is the board workshop for May, so that way if you wanna refer back to those for conversations today. So really, the purpose of this workshop for you as a board and for us as a district is for the board to discuss the strategic strategic growth plan, so you've got the February version. Questions, discussion, direction for the district, direction for the bond committee, moving forward and direction of future bonds. You've got the workshop for May in front of you, just some of the bond data and the election data, so just some direction there. And that way we can reconvene our committee however you direct us to do. And then obviously, we know in the next eighteen months with the middle school, the two middle schools opening in twenty twenty six and the two high schools in twenty twenty seven, timing for zoning, naming, mascots, colors, all of those things, so just direction from the board to see if that kinda matches up what the district's thinking as far as timelines. So just kinda open it up and let that discussion take place.
Well, I'll start, Councilor. I guess the first thing I see is that our, in terms of this year, growth we're seeing a little bit higher than what we were even projecting just a few short months ago.
That's correct. So everything's preliminary, of course, till the first, you know, few days of school, but what we have right now shows more growth than what we had expected.
And do we know where that growth is, what levels, like is it elementary, middle, or high?
It is elementary. We're two hundred above elementary right now, so according to our demographer this afternoon, he had him elementary at about eight percent and he's trending at thirteen percent right now, based on what we've got.
Two hundred above project- projected, remember, at the start?
Yes, and that's at one campus.
Is that one campus?
It's at one campus. Everything else is spot on district-wide, every level.
Is that JRE?
Yes.
So we're two hundred over at JRE, but at two hundred total, but two hundred, but all the other schools
They're all within about ten to fifteen to twenty. They're either, you know, the delta's very small.
So it's not like one school's coming in lower?
No, no, they're all coming in at projection as far as.
And Hudson would probably attribute that to a miscalculated yield?
So what he shared with us today, and we're actually pulling, we're gonna go pull these particular streets, it's the build-to-rent portion community, the BB living portion.
Yeah, we were always curious about that.
And he said that that may be where some of that is off. The other thing is we had opened transfers, we opened the temporary transfers and we were up to, on Friday, as of Friday, we were at a hundred and sixty-two. Well, fifty-four of those were JRE. So those fifty-four necessarily would not have been in his opening numbers because those are homes being built, but they meet the temporary transfer qualifications.
And that's probably the ridge?
It would mostly be the ridge, yes. I think there's some portions of West.
Some of it's still harvest, too.
I mean harvest, yeah, some of it's harvest, too.
There's still some growth in harvest.
So those two things coupled together, he feels like is where that is, is trending over. But every other campus, we're within, I mean, the sixth grade center, we're within just a hand, like five. We're within middle school, we're within about, I think, ten to twenty. Let's see, middle school as of today, that's an old one. The middle school today, we are nine fifty-two, so we're thirty. We're thirty over there. And the high school right now, he had it sixteen oh three, and today we are at sixteen fifty-nine. Now, there'll be some first day, you know, no-shows and things like that, but then we have some families that we already know that are out of the country that'll show up next week. So they won't be here, they'll drop off rosters, but then they'll be back. We know they're coming. They just won't be on the first-day rosters.
Are there any waivers we're having to get for classroom sizes?
So we're watching that daily. As of today, we open, we're opening a, well, we're looking, we opened a third grade section at JRE on Friday. Depending on, meet the teacher this evening, at fourth grade at JRE, we may be. So the no-shows for, the no-shows tonight at JRE will get called, they'll call them in the morning to verify, and we may be opening a fourth grade section at JRE, so that we're not doing waivers to start the year.
And the good thing is, is we have room.
Yes, we have some room.
Unlike in past years that we've had that problem, we had any classrooms.
Yes, we have some classroom space, right. And our goal is to start the year within the state requirement of twenty-two to one. But, you know, sometimes when your numbers are off a little bit, they're coming faster than, than, you know, you could, you could have planned for in the very beginning. So we're watching that every, I mean, we're watching that daily. We've been talking to principals today.
And that's not, it has, that's not been unusual that you guys, I mean, every year somebody's shipping a teacher here or there
It's not at all.
because you don't know precisely where the kids are gonna come from.
Correct. Correct. And we've already done, we did some shifting right before teachers reported. And so we had to add a section on, we had no, no one else to shift. So then we added the third grade section Friday, and then we're at, could possibly add a fourth grade section, depending on, meet the teacher and shows.
So knowing that budget is a constraint as we potentially grow through the year, those schools that had a teacher transfer from their school to JRE, obviously there's open spaces there. Is that something that y'all are looking at? As adding people mid-year, teachers mid-year potentially, if growth is there, or just are we looking at doing waivers the entire year?
I think it depends, you know, my experience in the past, just from being a campus principal, a lot of times when you're in that position and you sit down and talk to a team of teachers, they don't want to interrupt the students at that point. You know, if they're sitting there with one or two over, they would rather do that than mix a whole other section in there. So we will obviously give them some voice in that before we were to come to the board and say, hey, listen, we, we're gonna need to open a section in October. But typically, you just, it's like we did last year, we did waivers. And most of the time that's what you do, I mean, when you've got one or two here or there.
Well, it's a perfect storm, a six went way half a dozen the other, where you don't wanna upset what's going on with the kids,
Right.
but parents also want a lower class size ratio as well, so.
Right. And, you know, six, five, six years ago, districts could do eighteen to one, twenty to one. But when you're five years past that and you're at the same funding levels, you can't have what you had then.
Right.
And that's where we are. And so until we get what we need from the state, we're gonna continue just like any other district, and that's where we're gonna see it, is in class sizes.
More than, go ahead.
No, no, it's good. So we just moved a teacher for the third grade at JRE?
No, we're actually, we had already moved everybody that we could move.
Okay.
Because JRE, we opened a new section at each grade level, and we had already moved all that we could move, so we had to add another section in third grade.
And we have to do the same for fourth grade?
Maybe, maybe. It's a maybe right now.
Maybe, if it happens.
So even with all of our challenges and all that, we still grew at the eight to nine percent with exclusion of,
Oh, yeah.
And then my other question would be, what is the capacity with two hundred? I mean, having lived to the fact that we opened the last bowl.
They're right, they're showing eight hundred right now. Yeah, they're showing eight hundred right now. And they were projected at five ninety-nine.
Okay, so we have fifty? So across the board, I guess, capacity-wise, so.
Everybody else is looking, I mean, you've got West sitting at, Hilltop's sitting right at seven thirty, seven thirty-five, you've, seven, pushing seven fifty. You've got, what, South is seven seven four as of today, and there'll be some no-shows. West is six twenty-seven, and JRE's eight oh two.
And do y'all have off the top of your head the functional capacities of those schools?
Those, well, it's gonna be well over eight fifty. I mean, what we can, I mean, just like we've done the last two years, is that what you're talking about?
And Hilltop has a smaller functional capacity than the other campuses.
Correct. Yes, because of the special programs, yes. But we have moved, we did move a life skill section out of Hilltop over to another campus, right?
Exe.
Exe, we moved Exe, so that freed up some space at Hilltop.
So they're probably at a hundred percent?
They are right at a hundred percent, accurate.
Okay.
So the last week we were talking about trying to run at eighty percent, where you had the delta for the growth and all that, and we're already at a hundred?
Well, we knew going into this year we would be at Hilltop. We, we knew that based on numbers.
So what are your ninety percent?
But the two hundred, the two hundred more students at JRE puts that in a different position.
But, but West, we'd say is eighty percent?
Yes, correct.
Did I drop to? I think what this tells me, to bring it kinda back to the growth planning, I haven't studied this, so I don't know, but I'm gonna assume that there aren't many districts out there that have four elementary schools with seven hundred, eight hundred kids, eight hundred and fifty kids in them, in one middle school.
Absolutely.
That you would never.
The math does not do, that math does not, that math does not work.
That, that you don't, when you look at kind of like planning, long-range planning, you don't have four elementary schools of that size feeding into one middle school.
Right.
And it, it tells me that there is some urgency and that there is some need, because we have a fifth that we've approved.
Correct.
That, you know, we need two middle schools.
Correct.
Absolutely. I concur with you with what Wes from.
That is, our secondary campuses from a capacity standpoint are definitely pinch points for us. Now, elementary's growth rate right now is spiking, but we, we do have elementary five already approved, so that's, we have that in the mix, but our pinch point is our secondary.
Yeah, even if we had six elementaries on the ground right now, the pinch points are the middle school.
Still the middle school.
Yeah. And, and it, I mean, even this year, you're saying we have nine hundred and fifty kids in the seventh, eighth grade.
In eighth grade.
Seventh and eighth grade, so you're having five hundred kids in each class.
You're at four ninety-one in just sixth grade today.
I mean, to me, I mean, you're, you're, you're getting.
You have fifteen hundred kids, sixth, sixth grade.
Three. I'll be interested to see.
Which is the size of our, just shy of the high school right now, nine through twelve.
Yeah. And that's, that's.
Well, that was a challenge of, when we looked at the bond, is we knew we had capacity issues. You know, how the community and messaging got put and all that sort of stuff is probably the greatest challenge. Is, you know, that, that point you're saying is, we're one of the very few districts that have four elementaries and one high, one middle school.
Four big elementaries, right.
I mean, and that middle school is a big middle school. Even the one we're building is a larger than I would like to see middle school.
Twelve hundred two-grade levels.
Twelve hundred kids is like too much in two grades, in my opinion, but it's what we have.
Right.
Thankful we have a sixth grade center.
Yes, it is necessary right now.
A poor building is being used for everything.
But to, and to tie that back into growth planning, I mean, that is a school, that middle school that's blown four oh seven. I think we approved the procurement method, the C M A R, in December of twenty-two. Okay? I think we had the land in January of twenty-three. And that school, I mean, because of just the challenges of building in today's world and the, just the approvals and permitting processes and city review processes, we, I mean, it's gonna be, open when?
Fall of twenty-six.
Twenty-six.
And that's when we'll, yeah.
So you're talking four years.
It took.
Almost four years to get that school. I mean, and, and that's, that, that to me is talking about the urgency of, you know, but in four years, we'll have elementary five.
Right. And we would've had, we would've had middle school too, fall of twenty-eight. Now, that's pushed back another year, so we're, we're working to make, we're strategizing to make do to push it to fall of twenty-nine, if we can get it, to get it on a bond package.
Cause we were talking about a thirty-month delta for a bond, so completion, and now that's close to forty-eight.
Right. I mean, it's, it's, the reality is it's a capacity issue. No matter which way you look at it, no matter which configuration you try to do, it's a capacity issue.
But it's not for lack of foresight. Like, if we'd come here eight years ago and said, we wanna build a second middle school eight years ago, no one, no one had that.
Right.
So, I mean, we started this project, you know, going on three years, three years ago. So we, we saw it, we, the community spotted. So I'm, I'm not trying to placate anyone, but I'm saying like, we're, we're looking, we're, we see, we see what's coming. Um, so a lot of things like Mr. West from said are, are dictated by forces we can't control.
Yeah, these schools don't pop up when you need them.
No.
The longer you stretch them out, the more they're gonna cost us, so. I mean, what's the difference between, I mean, West and JRE? Same building, same layout.
West was what, two thirty-something, JRE was four.
Twenty-two million to forty-four million, so double.
So we've doubled in price in four years, roughly. No, five, nineteen, open West.
Yeah, it opened in nineteen.
It's the same building. And so the longer we string that out, the more it's gonna cost, so. And that's just reality.
So we feel very confident that, that we need, we gotta, we gotta have a second middle school. And we feel pretty confident that we're gonna need our sixth and potentially seventh elementary.
Right, right. We, when five opens, we'll have a capacity of four thousand one hundred fifty elementary students, that gets us to twenty twenty-nine. If six opens on time in thirty thirty-one, that gets us to five thousand, and that gets us through twenty thirty-three before we would need seven.
If six, but we don't even have the money for six.
We don't.
So I'm just trying to think. So if I needed to, when we start backing that out, by the time you get bond approval to selling the bonds, to picking a procurement method, I mean, it, it's a four-year deal.
It's a four-year process. Which is, pushes us to.
Plus length, I mean, we, we got land, right?
We don't have the assets. Right, right. And we don't, yeah, the, the money in that bond is for land. The, the land money in the bond, the future land is in that bond.
If we have another episode of elementary school growing by thirteen percent versus eight percent, how far back does that push us? Is it like twenty-seven or twenty-eight?
I don't think it'll do that. I mean, he, I would have to have him run those numbers based on, but it would be more of, it'd be another rezoning. If we would be rezoning again before a new campus opened, that's what it would be.
And so that just goes back to capacity and where do you have the space?
Right.
Yeah. Which is, and that's what our kids and families, that's one thing you don't wanna do.
Right.
Well, and with a lot of that growth right now, with the finish out of the ridge and harvest, that's zoned to JRE, and a lot of, a lot of those two hundred students, you know, we're, we're, we're punching up to the, the max capacity already, so we're about next year, here, I mean.
You could increase it, um, what, three twenty-five to three fifty, and max out all our elementary's from today's numbers.
So it's gonna be like you said, it's gonna end up being a rezoning before we ever build another, before we ever open another.
And that is that those are the growing pains of fast growth, you know?
Yeah.
Especially the developments that are, you're trying to get the best information you can from developers, you're trying to yield the best that you can, and some of those factors, you know, change the game, change the purpose.
And I know we had some developments that aren't, they're building, they're not huge, but they're building north of where Hilltop is, up that way of three seventy-seven. And that, without going back on my demographic report, but what will we looking at as potential yield? I mean, are we gonna eat up those three twenty-five to three hundred fifty kids just alone even out of that, not even mentioning harvest and re-aging?
He doesn't have a great deal of growth in the Hill, I mean, the Hilltop, those developments don't, do not change cause he was pretty much right at capacity or just a little bit over for the next, for the next duration until we open five. So it was, it was going to be basically the same for the next four or five years, or whenever we get that one open.
But they're pretty much at capacity now, books, cause we're a lot of the special needs kids, so.
They're opening there. As we move some of that out, and they, they gained another development.
Yeah. I think he's projecting us around two hundred elementary students a year. If you look at two, twenty-seven eighty-five.
But not, but he didn't also project as many as we got this year, so it's very likely, when this year finishes, we could hit the three twenty of that year.
Right. Right, for that one, I mean, the, the numbers he's given us are for snapshot, which is the end of October.
Then you're, then you're, then you're down to. Before, before Graham Durts even moved.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And we'll have two, three months of school before his actual number for snapshot. I mean, we're gonna have, we're hitting snapshot now.
So, so if you look at, we had, what, elementary six was on the bond?
It was.
Took seven off, I thought.
Seven was on out of the committee.
Well, we did, when we did the.
So if six is on the bond, it was on the bond, when, based on these numbers, do you think we would need number six?
We have six slated for twenty thirty, opening in twenty thirty.
I was not saying we need to back up from there. Number six?
What's when we have, right now, based on our capacity numbers and what we get with five, once five opens and what his numbers are showing, we would have five thousand students, we would have capacity for five thousand. And so we would, we basically, we were planning on opening six in twenty thirty.
So you back that up in that timeline, if you're looking at a four-year deal? I mean.
That's one, if you have.
We've done elementary.
That's if you have land, that's if you have gone, that's plan one of six.
But.
Can't buy land.
Yeah, that's January.
Construction six, seven.
It's a year, it's a year from January, correct.
But I feel like, uh, South and JRE, from its on to, to opening.
I just don't like to look at it. It was probably under four years, but I think four years is appropriate for planning.
On, on elementary. Yeah, on elementaries for, I think so, but not a middle school or, yeah, that's gonna take.
Yeah, but it's still gonna depend on municipality.
Yeah, I was gonna say that you're dealing with a flower mill.
We have to play it on. Those were also all donated pieces of property. So we had that land, we didn't have to go look for it, on, on JRE, West and South.
South.
They're all developed.
We don't have the land for the, September.
We don't have the land, we don't have the money to buy the land, so we still have to back on that.
Twenty-two to.
You have to do a contract contingent upon bond pass.
And now you're saying you melt the school in two years.
You're, you're on the clock. All that fails, it's bonds, portable city.
Right. Most municipalities.
And some of the municipalities that don't allow them.
Yeah.
I mean, that's a good point, Tim.
Yeah. Can, can you afford the portals?
Yeah, cause that comes out of the M and O side.
That comes out of M and O, and we know that one portable at Hilltop, those were three hundred thousand lives.
Yeah, but they, they lunged us, they lunged us that.
That was a free toll.
That, that wasn't buying them.
We didn't have to buy them.
Yeah, we were moving, they lunged them, moving stuff, yes, all of that, and we spent a lot of the money.
Without implying.
Three buildings there.
Yeah.
From a, from a high school capacity, nine through twelve, we have thirteen hundred and twenty-one hundred, that's what we have right now. And we know that there's some pressure points in the commons areas, we've heard that, we've heard that from the kids. That was the reason some of that was on the bond, but thirty-four hundred's what we can get to, and that gets us to the twenty thirty-three school year. So we, we're at thirty-two ninety-six and thirty-two thirty-three, and we exceed thirty-four hundred and thirty-three thirty-four.
So, so anything in, in the two high schools is not necessarily about capacity, it's more about relieving pressure.
Pressure.
Well, either with the pressure, but you also, in twenty twenty-seven, no matter what, you've gotta remove the, I mean, we're, we're at capacity over here in twenty-seven, which is the year we're transitioning to high schools. So that takes care of that piece. So there, something is happening in twenty-seven.
But, but, yeah. But, but nothing that we're talking about now for potential next bond includes capacity, includes.
Correct, correct, yes.
It includes redoing things to relieve pressure.
Right. Yes, if you were to do anything, it's just to give.
Expansion without classroom.
Yes, a hallway expansion over there because the third phase is out of question at this point, and then cafeteria expansion at three seventy-seven, but he would not have to touch the gyms, you could do some cafeteria expansion. We've had Mr. Sims looking at that, um, on the backside of the kitchen area to be very minimal from a cost standpoint, instead of demolishing one gym and building back, we wouldn't even do any of that.
With the capital improvements of the turf and all that.
Yes, we'd still need some of that, yeah.
I mean, that's close to being at the end of life anyway.
Correct.
We need that.
We need them for safety.
And what's the ramp up of getting that done? Is that just a order and get it done, or is there gonna be someone?
Yeah, you do it in the summer, yeah, obviously.
So you're not having to go through a new approval process?
It's not different, yes, you're, you're doing replacement capital improvement.
Well, I think the idea was originally, was that you could do some of those improvements at the three seventy-seven campus when there was lower, there wasn't being used. You had the second middle, you had the middle school open on four oh seven, it was a good time, as in maybe a partially.
Less capacity.
Less capacity, a little, little more challenging when you're, when you're running it at a full capacity.
And I, I think if we went back and, you know, had the committee come back, abbreviate it, put the, get the band back together for those who wanna participate, I think it, it's not an open invite cause you don't wanna recreate the wheel, there's a lot of time
Right.
and work established by the previous bond planning committee, get, get the band back together for a couple meetings, whatever that is. Let them reconvene and, and bring a bond package back to the board. Uh, I would assume it's probably exactly what they sent us the first time before we mucked it up a little bit. But the community's spoken pretty clearly, like, we don't want seat expansion. But we want it to be less congested, we don't wanna demo a gym.
Right.
Let's keep what we have and be, you know, fiscally responsible in that way. So I, I'd be for that.
You, maybe, maybe I'm wrong. I don't, I don't know that the community has spoken like overwhelmingly or convincingly in any specific way. I mean, but what we need to recognize is that any bond you put out there, if you look past, over the bonds that passed, you all, you had thirty percent opposition just built into any bond. They're not voting on seat capacity. You just have people that says, I'm not voting for a bond, and that's just kinda built in. If you have three thousand votes, you got a thousand that are gonna vote against you because it's a bond. So I don't think they're speaking with any real voice about the vision or the growth or whatever, you know, we have planned out. You're just not gonna have, you're in the hole. And so then when you look at it, you go, yeah, well, this bond failed by ninety-seven bucks, but you knew you were probably a thousand in the hole. I, I don't know that that was just like some outright, hey, we don't want more seats. Now, I'm fine, you ask me, I, I, I'm kinda fine with the high schools as they are. I, I, I believe, and I don't think this is a mystery to anyone, I believe in smaller, more intimate educational environments. I believe, I think what I heard is knowing kids by name and name. I think the two high school campuses that we have potentially provide that. I think they preventually, as they lay out, they look like you got thirty-four hundred seats. You may, you may, you got a little longer runway there, what you have is you have an elementary, middle school capacity problem. And we need to get more elementary schools, we need to get more middle schools. And I'm fine with the high schools, um, in the configurations that there are, and then when you eat up that capacity, you can make a decision. Do you wanna expand them, or do you want a third one? Do you want a C T E center? You know, what do you wanna do in twenty thirty-two, thirty-three?
I, I think, I'm more of that. I think having a third, the option for additional high school, C T E-specific-based high school, right?
And like the strategic plan, like, the way, the way it's written right now, like, ten-year strategic growth plan to split into two high schools, I, I think we need to, since, since the strategic growth plan is a, is a living document, I, I do think we need to look at just changing the verbiage and, and moving it to a multi-high school district. It doesn't pigeonhole to a number, it leaves future boards that decision when they get to that, that when we're at two high schools, what direction they wanna go, where our strategic growth plan is a, is a multi-high school strategic planning vision, it, that, that could be staying at two. But it, but it, it, it leaves an open and an opportunity for future boards to make that decision. So I, I, I would like to look at changing the strategic growth plan, the, the living document that it is, um, to move from an empirical number of two to looking at a, a multi, multi-high school. And that, again, future boards could say, we're good with two because of whatever innumerable factors there are, but it also looks at what are other outside-of-box thinking, um, that Mr. West from will have six years from now.
No, I mean, to comment, like, the C T E center, I mean, I, again, I, I said, oh, yeah, that sounds great, let's have a C T E center. But then I've heard people in education, you know, administration tell me, you know, that, you know, that's presented some challenges when you pull kids out of a nine through twelve traditional education environment, put them over a C T E center, that sometimes it's better just to integrate that program within the campus itself, huh?
They have, they have, they have to make some choices. They have to make some choices sometimes that, you know.
That you may be able to avoid making by integrating that into, you know, into, into the campus.
Correct. Yeah, and there's, there's numerous, yeah, numerous models about.
I agree with you, I understand. Adjust the strategic plan and not pigeonhole future boards to, we're done with this, cause they said two. because they said two, wait back when, what were they thinking? And, and give them the flexibility in the plan.
Well, I do think your attempt when we modified the bond was you were trying to make the two high schools more equal in size for fairness. And I think a lot of people I talked to really want smaller for everybody. And that gives the opportunity for people in the future to say, everyone gets a smaller high school compared to what we would be, of course.
We'd be one of the largest high schools in the state.
Well, and if that messaging continues, right, and we reach capacity issues, that's why you're saying, it says multi-high school, they could choose to open another one at that time.
Yes. Yes.
You know, it's a little bit tougher financially at that point because you have to build it.
Right.
Like, for us now, we have a fully functional campus.
Correct.
Right, yeah, that's.
With, with some necessary.
Right.
Capital.
Change, change, capital improvements.
Just because it's an aging facility, not because we can't function in there, it is a fully functioning high school.
That's, that's the one thing of this district that we have what ninety-nine percent of other districts don't have.
Right.
A lot of districts are building five hundred million dollar high schools right now.
I was just in London, I don't know, it had to cost more than that, how much did Sherman cost?
Uh, I can find out exactly, but.
Dude, it, it's like, I haven't seen anything like it.
How many, how many students is it gonna be?
Four thousand.
Cause see, that's the thing too, is you would be building a third smaller high school, so it wouldn't cost what some of these big schools.
It's three, it's. It's the biggest one or.
Different than Nelson?
That five hundred billion is probably not here.
Like the Temple House?
Yes. It's bigger than Nelson. It is three full floors of all the same footprint.
So, is anyone opposed to giving administration the direction to amend the strategic growth plan to say a multi, multi-high school?
So we can bring that back to you, um, really the only thing we had in there that we had amended the last time was to do the high school transition to two prior to going six A, we've accomplished that already, so this would just be amended. And in fact, I was, I was with U I L today, um, their senior leadership today talking about our scenarios. So that we're, we're on their radar for turning in a new school. We, they gave me the dates of when to turn that in and then all the things that happened, uh, for the fall of twenty-seven opening. So, we're on their radar, Coach Rogers, Coach Westonmoreland, I have that on our calendar of when to initiate that so that we can do all those parts, um, but that, that's been initiated, so we're, we're on their radar.
So Liz, can I talk to you about this, um, let's talk about cost.
Okay.
Um, and just tell me if I'm thinking of this right or wrong. When it, you know, first of all, when it comes to my, you know, my personal life and people that I know in this district, I mean, when it comes to our children, it's, it, it tends to be where, you know, we, we probably spend more on them than we should and they cost us more. Like, oh my gosh, just to play, you know, youth baseball or basketball or volleyball or soccer or whatever, um, guitar lessons, quarterback lessons. We all spend more on them and, and we're always trying to spend and create opportunity for them. And I think that the district should probably reflect that in some ways, that we should, we should reflect what the values of the community are, which is where we try to create opportunities for kids. Now, we have a budget every year, right? And so is this year, I mean, in very round, you know, it's fifty million, sixty million dollars, somewhere around that.
Somewhere around fifty to fifty thousand a year.
And we're gonna run all seven campuses off of that budget, right?
That's right.
And no matter how many campuses you have in the future, as your budget's gonna grow, hopefully, every year as more legislative funding comes, as more children are coming, the, the, the budget's gonna increase, correct?
That's right.
I did. And you're gonna run whatever number of campuses you need off of that budget, right?
That's right.
And so by making this decision to be multiple schools or, um, two high schools or whatever.
Two middle schools.
Two middle schools. What you're, what you're really making a decision on is, you know, what am I gonna spend that money on? What am I prioritizing within that budget, fair?
But, yes, you're.
And you're not really gonna spend less money under a one-high school system than you would under a two-high school. You're gonna spend the same, you're just spending it on different things, correct?
Yes, so we're looking at, um, I think Dr. Carpenter talked about transition teams. And so we actually started our financial transition teams and we're revisiting and, and looking at projections since we actually know we're splitting, we're looking at middle school and high school both. Since we're, uh, we know our years are twenty-six and twenty-seven, we're actually going and, you know, doing a deep dive and trying to, trying to come up with some anticipated costs. But yes, there will be, there'll be differences in, in either scenario and it's how you, you know, your total dollar doesn't change, it's how you spend dollars.
They spend it, so like, you know, in, in like a bigger district, you'll see they have, um, auditoriums and. They, they can, they can have a LeGran, LeGrane?
LeGran.
LeGrone Center where they teach automotive and cosmetology and they, they can do those things, right? Um, you, we, if you make the decision to, to say, hey, we're gonna be a multi-high school place, you may be making those types of sacrifices and saying, hey, we're not gonna have our own, you know, indoor swimming pool.
Right.
Or we may not be able to offer an automotive class, or we may not be able to offer a cosmetology class, or we may have to, we may not be able to offer a certain foreign language that you could in a, in a, in a larger school environment, right? Because that money may be being spent on another varsity coach or another sports team.
Band director.
Band director or transportation because you're spending more money, because you have more kids going places.
Right.
And because you're spending money on those things, um, you're not able to offer maybe the other things that larger one-school districts can.
Which are the educational opportunities.
Yeah.
That our families are, are seeking.
Yeah, I mean, and so, am I, am I thinking of this correctly? Is that it's kind of one big number, it's just what you're prioritizing within that number.
Yes, the, I mean, the, the total amount that we have to spend is based on the number of students, it's based on, um, the characteristics of those students and it's based on, somewhat on your tax base, you know, there's, hate to even put that in there because, you know, as, as people more, pay more taxes, really the state just gives us less. But there's all characteristics in there and it creates a number under our funding formula and that's our number to spend, regardless of how many campuses or how many staff or anything, we have a total dollar amount and then we have to prioritize what goes, where do those dollars go with no commercial?
And Liz, you hit on a great word, projections. You, you don't know what something's gonna cost two years from now, do you?
No.
Right, that's it.
I wish I did. Well, and like I shared, I sh, we were talking earlier today, we were talking about our transition team. If you were to have built, let's say twenty nineteen, we were tasked with building a five-year budget, a budget for twenty twenty-four, could you imagine with that how far off we would be right now? Because in twenty nineteen, you're thinking, oh, we've got two legislative sessions, they'll continue increasing the student basic allotment. Here we are five years later, we're on the same student basic allotment. And so if we had built a budget in, not twenty nineteen, for this year right now, we'd be millions of dollars over budget. Because we would have been anticipating additional revenue for each student.
And inflation of forty percent.
And, and inflation and all the things, and none of that has been taken care of, so.
And the formula transition that we really thought would be replaced with something.
And we've got Mr. Byrd and Coach Rogers involved in all those meetings because they know what those, how to help us do those deep, deep dives and those extracurriculars, which is where our students wanna be involved. And so they're involved in, in the, in that team as well.
And they're involved and they're also, they have access to other A Ds and band directors who've gone through this in the last five, ten, fifteen years.
And they've been talking to them. Yes, they have been reaching out to those districts that are going through it, um, going through when the split, you know, when the transitions happen, uh, talking to them about their startup process and, and so they've already, those relationships have already been started. They've been, they've been, they did start it that late last spring.
Not to mention that you personally have had experience in a district that went from one to two high schools.
And as we talked about with U I L today, I mean, those, there's different ways to do it, but the timing for us fits exactly where it needs to fit for a mid-alignment transition and so that's, we're exactly on par with what they would expect us to do.
And, and so there, there is this narrative out there that, oh, it's fiscally irresponsible to be multi-high schools. And my thinking on that is like, so you're telling me the only fiscal responsible thing to do is to take thirty-four hundred kids and put them in one school, that's the, that's the only thing we can afford. We can't afford any other option other than that, and that's not true, is it?
No, we, so, we look at, on our end, we look at what direction, you know, what direction are we headed right now? We, we know that we have given, been given directions that we're working on a multi, right, campus facility, I think, what, what did it, we changed it to multi-high school.
Multi-high school.
Vision. And so as, as we get to within range of those years, that's our job is to build the budget within what we see the actual revenue streams coming in and to give options. And then we have to work with, um, C and I and with staffing and go, okay, well, um, you know, if, if this is how much is allotted for staffing and you're gonna come back and say, well, I have this many students, I need this many teachers, and then it's how you divide those teachers out, right? If, you know, what type of, um, electives are gonna be offered and can, can it be a shared, you know, if you have one at this high school, can it still be offered at this high school? There's some, you know, as we're growing and getting bigger, there's some sharing that has to go on to still give students the opportunities. That's all within the planning process after we have the vision, so.
But, but regardless, the high schools of twelve hundred or twenty-one hundred, they're gonna have, they're gonna be able to teach English, they're gonna be able to teach math.
Or meet and teach.
They're gonna be able to teach science, we're gonna teach history, we're gonna have some A P courses.
Yes.
We're gonna have some traditional extracurriculars.
Yes.
We're gonna have the type of school that we've, in educational experience, that we've traditionally been able to provide in Argyle I S T that many people have found so attractive that they're moving here in large numbers.
Correct.
And that's what we're confident about, whether it's twelve hundred, twenty-one hundred or some number in between.
And we've heard that over and over at Eagle Bash, from the, from the new families coming in as to why they were coming.
I mean, people didn't move here to take Japanese.
Correct.
People didn't move here for automotive classes, they, I mean, I, I knew we didn't have that kind of, I've known for a long time that we have, you know, we teach, you know, traditional core subjects with A P college readiness type, you know, emphasis, fair?
Wow, and we do it well.
And we do it well because most of our graduates at the high school level, I mean, I'm not saying most, I think that's an understatement, are going to college, right?
Yes.
And so I go back to the point of, to say that it's the only responsible decision is to be one high school, it's just not a fair assessment. But we can, we, we can afford more than one high school when you have a projected enrollment of the size that we have, fair?
Well, the, and the other fallacy in the stuff that's out there is the chatter about, um, it's more expensive for the additional campuses needed. And we're not building any more campuses. The capacity that we have at three seventy-seven and the capacity that we have here at Canyon Falls, they are what they are. And so whether it was run as one high school split, which is, is not the direction that we wanna go, or splitting those into two high schools because those campuses were built as high schools, it's not adding any operational cost. Those facilities were gonna be utilized to the best, to the most efficient manner that they could be in either scenario.
Because we need multiple middle schools regardless.
Right.
Right.
And with the most efficient, and with the most efficient master schedule.
So, it's still being used. So, so you hear that there's all this other, these expenses that is irrelevant because we're utilizing every square foot we have.
I still gotta put a police officer on that campus.
Regardless of what you.
I gotta have a principal.
That campus is gonna be.
Gotta have a vice principal, gotta have counselors, gotta have nurses.
And those are all based on student capacity.
Right, but you, and what you're adding is you're adding the opportunity for kids to be involved in multiple things because you're giving them the opportunity to be involved in things where they were probably going to, we have many that can be cut otherwise. And I know some people argue that the competition is where kids learn, I bet, you know what, there's, there is nothing better than a kid being involved.
Participation.
And an extra per, it's some kind of participation with their high school.
They actually, I tried to find like actual scientific studies and they don't have any like really scientific, but they say that the kids that have the most success are kids that participated in athletics in high school more so than kids who went to winning programs. So even kids that go to Munster, Texas, even though they do very well, so if anyone's watching, they do, do well. But they do better long-term just from having the opportunity because it teaches you discipline. Getting cut from a team doesn't teach you discipline, it teaches you disappointment.
Well, and it's, it's, it's teamwork, right? I mean, it's, it's those other opportunities to, to grow and build together, whether it's a big football team or a smaller basketball team, uh, it, it will create leaders.
Large bands, mm-hmm.
Band, yeah, absolutely band.
Bands.
And people come out of those and, and they, they, the roles, they transition into the roles.
Yes.
And some of those folks that have the opportunity to be leaders on certain teams may not if they were in a different environment. And so the opportunities, whether it's to participate, um, team building, leadership opportunities, it's just, I think across the board, hard to argue that that's not a better scenario.
It's also a sense of belonging. I mean, when you don't get cut from things, I mean, you know, you start getting into where you have to cut sports and then all of a sudden, okay, what, what's my child gonna do? What are the other opportunities that are here, are they already full? You know, and then if you have kids that don't have a place, it's really rough in high school too.
I, I think we've heard, we've all individually heard of families that have moved to this district that have been here, who are going to other districts or private schools, what have you, for the ability for their kids to participate. And, and at some point, that's where it hits home, like, we talk about opportunities to include as many kids as possible in some sort of activity. And we've set very high parameters for this administration to follow through on with that. And this, I, I can speak from the mental health professional side, that is what kids need to have a well-rounded educational experience. They need to have inclusivity in some event outside of the academics as well, to belong to something. And that, that is key in the balance of an educational experience is them having an opportunity to belong to something. Um, and that's what having a multi-high school district affords our kids more opportunities for, it's common sense.
And I don't, I don't, but I don't wanna discount the fact that, you know, there are merits in the one-school model. There are benefits that it provides to the community and all that stuff. I mean, really at the end of the day, you're weighing the factors. And every one of us would weigh those factors differently. I'll put a little bit more weight on the, you know, opportunity, knowing the kid by need and name, smaller educational environments. And other people would say, you know what, you gotta protect the brand, you know, Eagle is paramount. You know, and it doesn't mean that person's wrong and, or I'm wrong, or that person's irresponsible and, and I'm, it just means that we're weighing the factors different, we're just a product of our upbringing. For me personally, it was a coach that came and found me in the hallway when I was making bad decisions in a bad school and brought me into the team and made me feel important, and I'm just a product of that environment. And that's what changed really the direction of my life is that I had to do the right things to stay on the team. And I wanted, I like an educational environment where you, you know, even today, you can look out there and say, you know what, I don't need that band kid because I got five of them that can play the instrument just like her. I don't need that kid because I got six kids that can shoot the ball just like her. You know, I want the coach that's gonna be out there looking in the cafeteria for that kid, be, hey, you need to get involved. You know, we need you. And then when the kid comes in as a sophomore after, you know, putting in all that time and years and saying, wow, I got passed by a freshman or wow, that position's not open, it's gonna be locked up for three years, I'm not gonna do it. I want that coach or that teacher to say, no, you need to stay involved, we need you, you know, to be involved, and that, and that's just it.
That's what opportunities are.
Yeah.
And to speak to your point, we're elected officials, right? And, and we are set to work, to set the strategic plan and vision for the district. And that's what every school board in the state has the autonomy and, and role to do. And for this district, we feel this is best for our students' educational experience. Not to discredit one mega-high school, but for Argyle I S T, this is our direction, this is our vision. And, and we're gonna, and, and that's what we feel as, as a board, is what's best for our kids' experience.
In the ten years that I've lived here, eleven now, I mean, most of our growth, uh, the time was coming from Copel and Flower Mountain, South Lake, and, I mean, people, the kids were looking for opportunity because they were getting phased out. God, I mean, it, it was tough. And the way I look at these numbers is, you know, we, we could probably be a cop. And the way I look at these numbers is, you know, we, we could probably be a Capel. I mean, when you look at geographically, they're about thirty square miles. They have about four thousand kids and they're a one-school community.
Do you remember what their superintendent told us when we were going through this process? Their superintendent said, we made the decision to put athletics ahead of everything and that's why we stayed one high school.
Yeah, and I, and I just, you know.
That's, that's not well-rounded.
And, and Capel's fine, I mean, it's great, but I don't, I don't see it as a destination necessarily, district. I mean, in fact, I, I mean, a lot of people I know.
Rich move, baby.
You know, or you can look at a school, and, and I mean, this is just me, you know, you can look at a Grapevine, Colleyville. You know, and, and it, you know, and you go, okay, yeah, that, that's, that's worked and, oh, there's some things that are challenging about that, that setup. But they've had their moments of success at both schools. I mean, Grapevine eliminated us in, in baseball, won the state championship. Colleyville eliminated us in volleyball and football, you know, I mean, and we're the, we're the one school town and they're the multi-school town. So I mean, they're having moments of success in the, in that model. And I don't see it as all negative and I don't see Capel as all great and vice versa. And so, you know, just to take the temperature down a little bit, you know, I would say, look, nobody's being unreasonable, nobody's being irresponsible. There are merits to both models. The reality of it is, is we have to pick one. And the way we weigh the factors happens to be, hey, let's weigh on smaller, more intimate educational environments and let's prioritize within our budget, creating that kind of environment. That's how I feel about it.
And even when the high school committee was asked, their ideal graduation class size, it was no, the majority, it was eighty-some odd percent, it was no bigger than five hundred. Multiply that by four, it's two thousand. So no, even they didn't want four thousand.
And, and, and it's not a conflict.
Instinctively, yes, instinctively.
And that's not particularly controversial to say, you know, a couple, couple thousand kids on campus is about where all I wanna go. It's not, I mean, in education, it's not say, oh, you know, that's really irresponsible to do that.
Graduation ticket, right?
So I, I, I mean, going back, we need elementary schools, I think we need middle schools, I'm fine leaving the high schools, I, you know, whatever.
We just need to back it up.
So we'll, we'll reconvene the bond committee, invite back those that are willing to come back. Uh, we'll, we'll get that scheduled, um, and then have them bring a package back to the board late fall, right there, kind of as we come back in the spring semester. Because the deadline to call bond, if you so choose to do so, would be in February for May election. So we can do that, um.
Does the district have any thoughts on zoning updates?
Yeah, I think, you know, if you think, you know, try to look forward and then back, back it up, right? So if we're going to, if we're going to transition to two middle schools in twenty-six and two high schools in twenty-seven, those zonings, really, you're looking at the middle school from a timing standpoint. So if you wait until the fall of twenty-five, that does not give families, I mean, that, that's, that's pretty quick. I mean, that's a pretty quick turnaround, the school's gonna start and the middle school's gonna open. Our recommendation would be, let's go ahead and zone this fall, like November, December of this fall and get that done so everyone knows what their zones will be. Um, and if they, you know, so choose to wanna make a change, they have plenty of time to do so. But that gives, that way we know what our zones are. I think more importantly, for like Mr. Byrd, he's trying to plan instruments on students and what to buy and what, how to match students with instruments. And so that would make his life much easier if he knew what those would be. Um, from Coach Rogers' standpoint, same thing, so he can figure out uniforms and, and all the ordering, at least the dollar, you know, the dollar amounts there. Um, and then I think we can do the zoning portion first and then I think, if, especially if there's gonna be a bond in the spring, just from a capacity standpoint from our teams, come back and do naming colors and mascots, start that process next summer and have it done right there at the beginning of the year. Because we'll be bringing out a district brand in the fall of twenty-five, um, because we need a district brand now that we're gonna have multiple high schools and multiple middle schools. So I would, I would prefer that we split those two up, get the zoning done, see what happens in the spring, what we're going to do, and then finish that up in the, in the summer and early fall. Just to give us some time because that's a lot for our team, depending on what's going on with an election cycle.
Yeah, I, I, I think if that's your timeline and you see that's what fits best, obviously, we don't know y'all's bandwidth.
Right.
You know, you're always busy, um, there's always things popping up that aren't on the radar. But I do think being transparent with our community as, as punctually as possible and that way for just bare minimum, they, they know.
Right, right.
I mean, people can start planning.
Right.
And getting excited for that, asking questions and, yeah, obviously rezoning is the, the first step to it, so.
And you know, that's, that's where we work very closely with our demographer because our goal is obviously, we wanna, we wanna develop something that's going to get us, um, maximize our capacity of maximizing our years, um, so that we can get as far as we can with our current capacities, based on what we have.
And hopefully not have to rezone.
And hopefully not have to rezone in the middle.
So you're recommending a bond in possibly, not recommending, but talking about a bond in, in May?
Yes, depending on what the, if we bring the committee back and they have a recommendation, we bring back to you guys for a, for a May of twenty-five bond.
And so, talking about, going back to what we talked about earlier and the timeframe for putting up elementary schools and stuff like that, does a May bond give us, we still are given enough time to, well, I know, I'm just saying.
Tight.
It's gonna be tight.
It'll be tight regardless for the middle school because we've, it's already putting us a year back on the middle school. Um, we, we could push to a fall of twenty-five, that would put seventh, eighth, ninth, tenth and eleventh in there at three seventy-seven. And then the year we have a senior class, seventh and eighth would move over to a new middle school if we could get middle school to, um, passed and bonded and all the things. Um, but that's the timeline. I mean, it's, it's, if you're talking twenty-nine, you need to pass at twenty-five.
Can you, how, when, when the middle school opens up on four oh seven, hopefully in twenty-six, how many kids are gonna be in seventh and eighth grade?
I, I can tell you, holistically, in twenty-six, twenty-seven, in seventh and eighth grade, we would be at, to make sure I read this right. Yeah, so you're looking at thirteen, fifty and about seventeen, about seventeen, fifty, seventeen hundred, seventeen hundred?
No, wait, that, that includes sixth graders.
That's including sixth graders, correct.
Okay, but at the, the seven.
It's close to twelve hundred.
Yes, so take them out, you're already at twelve hundred, which is the capacity of that building.
Just.
To open.
To open seven, to open four oh seven, we'd be at the twelve hundred mark.
And of just seven.
Seventh and eighth.
And eight, it's not twelve hundred, six through eight.
Just twelve, seventeen, eight.
Which is why the next year, you're sitting there saying, under this, or we're sitting under this plan, we're gonna take some of those kids
Right, so that's.
and put them at three seventy-seven.
And that's why we would just do it naturally at twenty-six instead of moving them all over and then move them back over.
Gotcha.
And ideally, those would be, or the, your, your vision, the kids that would go to the three seventy-seven campus would fit within a zoning that is gonna be.
Correct, the middle school, high school zone, they would be the same, so you'd have a feeder. That would be ideal. That's what we will work with the demographer on.
But it's really that middle school pressure point there. I mean, when you talk about twelve hundred seventh, eighth graders. That's, I don't know that anybody is really doing that in any, what district where they're slamming twelve hundred.
Yeah, eleven, eleven, eleven eighty-one would be the actual projection number.
Talk about weaning kids out of activities.
And then we would still have room then, yeah, with five hundred and fifty-four sixth graders to use the sixth grade center.
Right, you have some, you have some room in the sixth grade center for a while because the capacity over there is seven thirty. So we have enough time to get through the first transition and get a middle school open.
Okay.
Then move those sixth graders to their campus that are zoned for the three seventy-seven side.
But I just don't think you can get seven hundred cars in and out of that individual.
No, no.
We're seven hundred kids bad.
Different dismissal star times.
We're seven hundred kids bad.
You might have to have different.
We need to give these back.
No, those are online, you can have those.
Can I just say one thing?
Yes.
Um, I appreciate Amy and Josh being here.
Yes.
Very much listening, taking notes, um, because you, you know, you guys are part of this, this whole recommendation process, so. I guess, um, you know, I can't speak for everybody, but I can tell you, I appreciate you being here.
Yes, thank y'all very much.
Yeah.
She can speak for me.
Okay, I'll speak for her too.
So our next steps with them is we will get with our facilitator, we'll get with Amy and Josh, we'll talk dates, look through that process. Um, we'll probably start that next week after we get school started this week before we get to you guys.
You've got time.
Yeah.
We've got time.
We've got time. And then we will plan on bringing Monday night, the adjust, the revision to the strategic growth plan for multi-high schools. We'll get that on the agenda for Monday. We'll have that done.
Best of luck on Wednesday.
Thank you, we're excited.
I know y'all put a lot of work in over the summer, so we'll see how well it pays off.
It's a big day, it's a big day.
Anyone else have anything? All right, we're adjourned at five forty fourteen.